About 20 seconds for a transition to YouTube for live. So it looks like just waiting for the streaming to start. Certainly, Mr. Mayor, we are live.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. So I'd like to welcome everybody to this special council meeting, which is a training session. And thank you all for taking time off from what traditionally is a week off in July for council members. So the purpose behind this was the following the Code of Conduct, the new Code of Conduct. I thought it would be useful and so did our city clerk that we have some some training in respect to parliamentary procedure, in particular, giving us assistance in being able to carry out our duties. Each of us has those as we chair meetings. So and doing that in conjunction with our new Code of Conduct. And also hopefully the expert we have in parliamentary procedure might even comment on our procedural bylaw, which I don't think there's ever been a third party review of our bylaws. So a couple of housekeeping matters as always. Madam Clerk, if you would please call the roll.
Certainly, Counselor Weaver.
Present.
Counselor Vanderstel.
Present.
Counselor Martin.
Here.
Counselor Carpenter.
Here.
Counselor Antoski.
Here.
Counselor Van Tilborg.
Here.
Counselor Wall.
Present.
And Mayor Davis.
Present.
So a couple of other housekeeping matters as always. Because of our bylaw regarding virtual meetings, I have to read out the rules that apply. So just like to remind the members of council and the viewing public that there are a few unique procedural rules relating to virtual meetings. All members should be muted for the meeting except when you're speaking to receive feedback. Our web cameras for council members have to remain on during the entire course of the meeting, even if you should slip aside to get up some water or take a break. Staff will request that they join the meeting as and when the need arises. Any member of council should indicate that they wish to speak by pushing the raise hand button in the participants box. And I'll then use that box to recognize a speaking order. And clerk staff will lower your hand once you've been recognized to speak. So you don't have to do that yourself. In the event that there's a connection or service interruption, we try to resume the connection to establish quorum within a 15 minute period. If we can't do that within 15 minutes, the meeting is automatically adjourned. So members of council, are there any peculiary interests anyone needs to make in respect to the singular item that's on our agenda tonight? Just physically raise your hand. Not seeing anybody raise their hand, not surprisingly. So as per section 15.6.3 presentations, that's under our city's procedural bylaw. Presentations are limited to a maximum of 10 minutes inclusive of questions from members. Furthermore, each member of council would only have two speaking opportunities to the an item that's on the agenda. Unless there's any objection, I would suggest we just simply waive that. And and do as we did earlier this summer when we had the expert commenting on the Code of Conduct or Integrity Commissioner. So any objection to that? A little more wide open format for this training session, not seeing anyone objecting. So Tanya Donalds, our city clerk, would you please introduce our presenter, Mr. Jim Lockery? I see Mr. Lockery there, but give us a little bit about Mr. Lockery's background.
Certainly, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Jim Lockery, who is a certified professional parliamentarian and a teacher of parliamentary law and a member of the American Institute of Parliamentarians. He specializes in workshops, presiding skills and facilitation. He has an honors bachelor in mathematics from the University of Strathclyde, Glasgow, Scotland. Mr. Lockery is a past international president of the American Institute of Parliamentarians and has served in many capacities within that organization. He is a past president of the Toronto Parliamentary Society, which is dedicated to the improvement of meeting practices through democratic processes. Mr. Lockery's list of services include acting as a parliamentarian at board and annual meetings, being a workshop presenter such as tonight, presiding and facilitation at meetings. He is a specialist in Robert's Rules of Order and the Standard Code of Parliamentary Procedure. Mr. Lockery is a winner of the prestigious Ward of Writings in Parliamentary Law from the American Institute of Parliamentarians. And he is the author of Meeting Procedures: A Simplified Parliamentary Authority Based on Modern Procedural Practices. I was actually first introduced to Mr. Lockery when obtaining a certificate within his basic parliamentary procedure workshop. So it is my pleasure to have Mr. Lockery then join us this evening.
Yeah, and I wanted to say, Mr. Lockery, thank you very much for joining us this evening. And you know, this council has been in place now for about a year and a half, and we've never received any formal training. So each of us, we chair a meeting based on our own prior experience with various boards and also prior experience of council and our knowledge and understanding of our procedural bylaws. So very much looking forward to whatever assistance you can give to us. And I understand you're going to do a presentation and then the floor will be open for questions. But is your presentation divided into sections where you'd want questions to come either at the end or during particular sections?
Okay, so the way I would like it to work is that I will we I think we have nine or 10 slides. So each slide has got an element to it, and we'll talk about that. You can interrupt me at any time. I guess just by putting your hand up, I'll try and keep looking at the screen. So don't hesitate to ask questions at any time. I'm trying to do this like I would a physical meeting. It's not quite possible. But I would like you to be able to interrupt me or appropriate time ask a question. It doesn't even have to be on this on the page that will have up. It could be anything that comes to your mind. So don't hesitate. I can go anywhere with you. And something that Tanya didn't say was that I gave a workshop in Branford two years ago to staff. And and prior to that, a few times way back in the 19, I'm sorry, 2010, etc. One other thing she didn't mention is that this is a part time job for me. I worked for Ontario Hydro for 30 years and mostly in nuclear stations. And and I came here 50 years ago. And I haven't lost my accent, as you can hear. I hope. I haven't heard any of yours so far, but please interrupt and ask questions. That's the way to get it done, mostly parliamentary procedure. And I will start off by talking about a few a few high level principles that you go by. We'll just spend a few minutes on them, but you can still ask questions.
Okay, so so Mr. Lockery, I'll let you recognize then people that want to ask you questions since we have a small number of people. So you can, yeah, you're right. You can you can see from your computer screen.
Actually, I can only see one, two, three, four, five, six right now. So anyway, you could speak up. I'll still answer.
Okay, well, if it falls into chaos, then I'll take over as the chair.
Chaos is okay, as long as you can control it. Okay, can we go to the next one? Okay, so I want to talk about the principles and rules of meetings. The majority must be allowed to rule, of course. That's our whole principle about democracies. The majority must be allowed to rule. But we also have a minority. The minority have rights that must be respected. And one important thing you have to recognize, and you know this anyway, that the majority can change from motion to motion. So the rights of the majority are to attend. The rights of the members are to attend. The rights of the members are to vote. The right of the members to speak, to make motions, to have advance notice of motions in certain cases. That's a majority's rights. The minority have exactly the same rights. Okay, so we try to make it that the majority will rule each time. And the the minority have equal rights to the majority. Members have a right to information to help make decisions. Of course, we need information. It comes from staff. It comes from consultants. It comes from yourself as you debate. It comes from reports, from committees, etc. So members have a right to help make decisions. Quite often during a meeting, you probably say to yourself, we don't have enough information to continue here. So if what would you do? You would postpone the matter to the next meeting. Or you might send it back to a committee. So those are the things that you've got a right to do. And of course, you have to get the agreement with by majority vote based on a majority of those present, I believe, in municipalities. The fourth one there is courtesy in respect to others are demanded. Of course, we need courtesy in respect. You can turn people off. They're not participating anymore unless you are courteous and respectful. All members have equal rights, privileges and obligations. They're not absolutely the same. The chair, the mayor, has a little bit more. He's a right to chair the meeting, ruling points of order, etc. But generally, you have the same rights and privileges and obligations. Members have a right to an efficient meeting. We try to get through things quickly. As I said, if you don't have enough information, why not send it back to the committee? Why don't postpone it to the next meeting until you get the information? Now, those are the six major principles of the members. One of them is absolute. The others aren't absolute, and we can go through that. Which one? Does anybody have their hand up to ask that question? Which one is absolute? Yeah, I see Mayor Davis.
Okay, I'm an eager Beaver, and I'll say the first one is that the majority must be allowed to rule.
Well, sometimes we have motions that require a two side vote.
Right.
And a two side vote means that we're allowing one third plus one to rule on certain motions. So that's not absolute. The majority isn't absolute.
I think I see Counselor Antoski.
Yeah, I don't see it. I don't see it. Yeah. Go ahead.
I would think that courtesy and respect for others are demanded.
Correct. Yeah, courtesy. That's a demand, courtesy and respect. And you could even apply it not just to be council member, but also to the public. So courtesy and respect is demanded. The others aren't absolute. The minority have rights that may be respected, of course, but we can cut debate off on them with a two side vote. So it's not absolute. I'm trying to read this. Members have a right to information. Yeah, but you can have all of this. It's almost impossible to get all of the rights to all of the information that you might need. All members have equal rights, privileges and obligations. The mayor has a slightly more according to your bylaws. You give him the right to rule, make motions. Yeah, and the last one is members have a right to an efficient meeting. You can't always have an efficient meeting. It's not possible. In fact, effectiveness is more important than efficiency. Any questions on these rulings? On these high principles? Okay, we can go to the next one then. Okay, so now we're down to some procedure. And the procedure for making a main motion. A main motion is the the way you get official acts of council in place and adopted. So the member is recognized and makes a motion. Usually, the member is puts their hand up at council and the recognize. Sometimes the mayor will keep a list of it's something that's going to be written out by a lot of councillors. So the member is recognized and makes a motion. The motion is seconded. The purpose of a second is just simply to say that the that member who seconded it wishes it to come to the floor and be discussed. That's all the second there is. Here's something that you maybe you don't know. Under Robert's rules, the second does not go in the minutes. Only the mover goes in the minutes. Number three, Presiding Officer states the motion. So this is a transition point. When the chair states the motion, it takes away from the the owner of the motion at that point, the mover, and gives it to the full assembly. So this is a transition point where the motion is given to the assembly when the chair states it. Now, in large organizations, they often don't state it. They'll point to the overhead projector or send a report. They'll point to it in the page four in the report. Basically, the same thing is stating the motion. So that's a transition point, an important transition point. Presiding Officer asks for discussion. The member the chair should just simply turn to the mover and see if the mover is willing to speak and has the hand up. Otherwise, they will go somewhere else to speak, but the mover has first right to speak to a motion. Presiding Officer takes the vote. So after there's been discussion back and forth, there's certain rules in discussion. It's in your procedural bylaw. Under Robert's rules, you can speak twice to a motion for 10 minutes each time. Most organizations don't do that. They say you can speak twice for four minutes or two minutes. If we've got a large convention, you get to speak once for two minutes. So and those are in special rules. So Presiding Officer asks for discussion. After discussion is finished, Presiding Officer takes the vote. So the Presiding Officer will simply say, all those in favor, please raise their hand. All those against, please raise their hand. The motion is adopted, or the motion is lost or defeated. In the United States, they generally take it with the eyes and nose. All those in favor, please say aye. All those against, please say no. Up in Canada, we use our hands. And the last one, a Presiding Officer announces the results. The affirmative have it and the motion is adopted, or the negative have it and the motion is defeated. So that's for a main motion. But there are some motions that don't require, for example, there are some motions that don't require recognition to make. The members can interrupt. Can anybody give me an example maybe of a motion that can interrupt? Okay, so I have somebody say yes. Maybe I was wrong. I remember was wrong one time before.
Yes, I don't. I'm not even. I don't have the gumption to be wrong twice. So but I but I think the motion to defer, I mean, that's that's your in essence interrupting.
No, the motion to defer or postpone cannot cannot interrupt.
Okay, well, you can have it. Isn't a motion of personal privilege or a point of order?
Right, exactly. So a point of order, on a personal privilege, even a point of information in certain instances can interrupt. So that because if you don't make your point of order at the time, first of all, a point of order is a simple motion that says, Mr. Chairman, a rule has been broken. Can you please correct it? Okay, that's all a point of order is. Can the chair please correct a mistake that's been made in the procedure? And so what would happen at that point is that the chair would they can interrupt, and the chair would deal with it right at that point. The chair would agree that the rule has been broken and ask the members to correct or correct themselves, try to correct themselves or disagree. Always subject to appeal, although the chair has got a lot of power in a meeting. All of the rulings, no matter what, and we can get into some of the details on them. The rulings are subject to appeal. And we, I think I've got a slide on that, and we can do it with it later. But appeal simply says, Mr. Chair, I believe that you got that wrong. And I appeal from the decision of the chair. And the chair handles it from then onwards. So we'll do that later. Some motions don't require a second. Did anybody tell me which motions don't require a second?
Motion to adjourn.
No, it requires a second. I know. I know we don't use it. We just, oh, yeah, let's go home. And the chair will say this meeting is adjourned without a second. And that's cutting corners, but it's efficiency, right? So adjourn technically requires a second. Anybody else? Point of order doesn't require a second. A motion from a committee doesn't require a second. Now, a lot of Canadian organizations do require a second from a committee. But I'm telling you things that you might not know it, but a motion from a committee doesn't require a second. In fact, your committee of the whole are made up of all councillors. So why would you need a second when you come to council? Well, that's a couple of seconds. Presiding Officer states the motion. There are sometimes where the chair can do things like general consent. Let's say there was an amendment made. There's a main motion on the floor. And somebody makes an amendment, and it's a simple amendment. We sometimes call it a friendly amendment. Roberts kind of says there's no such thing as a friendly amendment. But what the chair can do is say, this amendment adds these two words. Is there any objection to adding those two words to the motion? There being no objection, we'll add those two words to the motion. So so the Presiding Officer didn't actually state the amendment. He just simply said, do you agree that we should just add them to the word? It's called, we call it a friendly amendment.
So we, so Jim, we follow kind of a different procedure. We
Okay, good.
We asked the we asked the mover and the seconder, assuming it's a motion that has a seconder. Are you okay with your motion being amended? So I guess we kind of follow a bit of a different format.
Yeah, and most Canadians do that. It's not wrong to do it, but in my opinion, it's unnecessary. The chair can handle it on his own. And usually, we don't involve the second that as well on a lot of things. Because he only wanted the motion on the floor. That was the only purpose for it. Yeah, so what you're doing is not wrong. I know a lot of Canadian organizations do it that way. But in my opinion, the chair could handle it simply.
I see Counselor Van Tilborg, I think, has a question on us.
Yeah, so we don't have to change how we're doing it?
No.
Okay, I just want to be clear on that because it would sound like if two words were added, somebody who wasn't the first or second or could say, yeah, I have a problem with that. Next thing you know, here we go.
Okay, so here's how it would be handled. That's a good example, actually. If the chair says, is there any object? That's what the word the chair says. Is there any objection to adding these two words to the motion? If you object, at that point, it has to make a motion to add the two words. Okay, so the chair, although he's trying to be efficient and believes that these two words are immaterial, he still asks the assembly, hello, these magic words, is there any objection? Is there any objection to adding these two words? There being no objection, the two words are added to the motion. So anybody could object. I agree with you. Canadians don't object. We're such nice people. So
You haven't watched our council.
I've seen a lot of councils. Yeah, so let me get something what the mayor just talked about there. I'm telling you things here that might make your meetings more efficient and different from a procedural point of view. But usually, procedure is, well, procedure, it's not definitively things that the government are telling you to do. It's procedure. Okay, if you do it differently and it works for you, that's okay. There are probably things you maybe shouldn't do, and maybe they'll come up tonight, and we should talk about them. And I'm giving you simple examples here that like what the what the chair can do. So so those magic words, just remember, is there any objection, right? Presiding Officer Presiding Officer states the motion. So in that case, the the chair didn't state the motion. He simply tried to get it through what we call general consent. Okay, and it helps the efficiency of the meeting. Presiding Officer asks for discussion. Well, there are some motions that you can't discuss. Does anybody have an idea what one might be?
Well, there's the point of order. You don't discuss that. You don't
That's right. You don't discuss a point of order. Let me give you, yeah, the point of order is not discussed because the chair rules on it. But there is a slightly different thing. So let me explain that. If the chair doesn't know how to rule on it, it can turn it over to the assembly. You can turn it over to the councillors. They say something like, the chair is unsure of the rule. So let me give you that. Let's use the amendment example because amendment is one of the more used motions. Somebody moves an amendment. And somebody says, point of order, Mr. Chairman, that amendment is not relevant to the motion or germane to the motion. That that amendment is not germane to the motion. The chair thinks about it for a second, turns to his parliamentarian Tanya, and she doesn't know either. And so the chair could say, the chair is unsure, and I wish the assembly to decide. And the question we'd put to the assembly for a vote is, shall the amendment be considered? And if it's a positive vote, the amendment comes forward. If it's a negative vote on that question, the amendment is dropped. So again,
Would there be discussion at that point then?
Not not on deciding whether to allow it. But if you do allow it, there'll be discussion on the amendment, of course. But some of these procedural things, there's no discussion because you either say to yourself in your head, yeah, that's relevant. No, that's not relevant. So I don't know if these things come up a lot, but they do. They do. They do come up from time to time in a lot of organizations. But the chair actually turns it over to the assembly to decide. So the Presiding Officer, when we want a Presiding Officer asks for discussion, yeah, there are some that don't require discussion. Like previous question or what we sometimes say called the question. It's a motion to close debate, and I wish we would change it to close debate and vote immediately. Makes sense to me. So close debate and vote immediately is trying to close debate. So it doesn't make sense to have debate on closing debate. So that's one. There are others. Point of information doesn't require debate. It's somebody asking a question and the chair usually answering it, or the chair can simply say, I don't have the answer, but CEO or C A O, I'll ask him. So it comes through the chair, and the chair will may 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 not answer it. But if we can find somebody else to answer it, that would be okay. But usually, the chair should be answering it.
So Jim, in a point of information, can you can you use that to interrupt somebody else that's speaking? Or how does that usually work?
It usually works when somebody is not speaking. Yeah, you see, here's the thing. And the point of information, if you try to interrupt a speaker, the chair will ask the speaker, does he wish to be interrupted? And if the answer is no, then he keeps speaking. It's more, a point of information is more likely to be getting answers when there's nobody speaking. So let's say you're unsure. You're dealing with a main motion. Two or three people have spoken to it. You don't have enough information. You could say point of information and ask a question on the motion.
So Jim, in our procedure So Jim, in our procedure, we have, you know, generally a committee of the whole, it's two speaking opportunities. And at councils, it was dealt with, if it's coming up through committee of the whole, it's one speaking opportunity. So can someone use that? Because normally we'd use a speaking opportunity for a combination of debating and also asking questions of staff. So could someone have used up their one or two speaking opportunities and then, oh, point of information?
Yeah, yeah, they have, they would, they have to go through the chair. Mr. Chairman, through you to the CEO, C A O, okay. And if you can't answer it, you would have to ask somebody else to answer it. But all, all these point of information, point of order, point of personal privilege, all comes through you, Mayor Davis.
But someone could, someone could raise a point of information even though they've already spoken, let's say twice.
That's correct. It could be abused.
I wouldn't allow, I wouldn't allow abuse as a, as a chair.
Subject to appeal though, right?
Of course, yeah.
Any, any questions on this discussions thing?
Yeah, councillor Vanderstel, it's raised his hand. I see he's raised his hand.
Sorry, I may be invisible to you, Mr. Lockery. I'm not sure.
I see you now. I see you now.
Here, I'll move in. There we go. Jim, if you don't mind clarifying, if, if for whatever reason during normal council process, information comes forward that is not accurate, would it be appropriate when the speaker is done speaking to ask for a point of clarification or information to clarify the proper and correct information?
Yeah, yeah, you could do that. You could say, and again, through the chair, you say, Mr. Chairman, councillor so and so said this. Is that accurate? Is that what actually happened, Mr. Chair? And either the chair could answer it or go to somebody else.
Understood. Thank you.
So that would be clarification. Yes, you could do that. A point of, by the way, I want to point something, a point of information is an abused motion. People, councillors, and I know you don't do it, but you can tell me if you do or not. Point of information, Madam Chair, please state your point and then that member starts speaking in debate rather than asking a question. So if that happens, if it's being abused, the point of information, just to get the floor, the chair could say, what is your question? Okay, and, and then they would have to ask a question. You don't allow them to get debate. Point of, point of, point of information is used sometimes to get extra debate. Same as a point of order, point of order, Madam Chair, please state your point. And then the member starts debating whatever's on the floor. The chair at that point would simply say, could you tell us which rule has been broken? Point of order is to correct a rule that's been broken. So there are, that happens a lot in meetings. But it's, some motions are abused. So the chair has to take action on them. Or a member could do it too. A member could say, point of order, Mr. Chairman, the member is not asking a point of order. So anything else on that? I mean, one of the things I do when I have a physical meeting and it's more difficult virtual is I have scenarios which people act out so that they get a practice at doing some of these things. And I know we can't do that right now. And I put things in like somebody breaking the rules and the chair interrupting or somebody else interrupting. Just so you get a lot of practice of what can be done and what can't be done. So the Presiding Officer asks for discussion. Presiding Officer takes the vote. After the chair, the chair will say something like, are you ready to vote? All those in favor, please raise their hand. All those against, please raise your hand. The affirmative have it and the motion is adopted. Then an officer takes the vote. Any questions on taking the vote?
Yeah, Jim, we do here is the chair asks the clerk or the deputy clerk, whoever's chair or whoever is providing clerking assistance. They actually use our computer software to actually, you know, take the vote, but they only do it when the chair asks them to do it.
Okay. I read somewhere in your procedural bylaw about that. It was actually the one, what I saw was when we were taking a recorded vote. It says that the, the, the clerk calls the roll. Is that correct?
Well, in essence, the software we have, the C-Script software, every vote's a recorded vote. They have to push a button, yes or no, and their name comes up on a screen whether they voted yes or no. And then the clerk will then state verbally who voted in the affirmative, who voted the negative. So it's almost the, for the council and committee of the whole meetings, this recorded votes, almost that motion or request has almost become antiquated, given the technology we're using now.
Right. So, but what, one thing that you didn't say there and it's pretty typical that the clerk, especially when the technology is involved, takes the roll call or reads it from a computer screen or reads it from the overhead screen. But the chair should be announcing the result, in my opinion. Now, I know that, that's not what's happening, right? What you're doing again is not wrong, but it definitely goes against a lot of principles that the chair is in control. So the chair, the chair has been given the duty to announce the result. I know that a lot of when we have elections in large organizations and the people go away and count the votes and they come back, they will read out the results. But the chair is duty bound to actually say who won the election. So you may want to think about that. What you're doing is not wrong. It's because it seems to be something that you've been doing for years, so. Presiding Officer takes the vote and the Presiding Officer announces the result. Any questions on this? Any of this? Again, this is high, high level stuff. Is everybody following you? Okay, we'll come back to this if you need be, okay? Oh, there's six and a half steps. Okay, if you go back one. There's six steps there, recognition, second, state the motion, ask for discussion, take the vote, announce the result. And that's for main motions. Other motions are slightly different because we know that some don't need recognition, some don't need a second. So yeah, the six and a half steps. When a, when a motion is adopted, and this isn't in any, this is my, my opinion. The chair should state what happens. When, when, when you, when the chair says this main motion is adopted, it becomes an official act of Brantford Council. That's when it becomes an official act. But the half step is the chair should say something like, and the C A O will write a letter to the Minister of whatever. Or staff will put out a call for attend on a certain thing that you've just adopted. So just simply say, don't take more than 15 seconds to say what happens. It's the action out of that. Up until now, we've been doing all procedure. But at the end, if it's adopted, then just simply say, who does what? And if you don't know, just say, I don't know how this is going to proceed and we'll leave up to staff, something like that. Any questions that have said? That's in my book. It's in my book, yeah. Some municipalities use this. Down in your area, a couple down in Niagara use it up in Bradford, West Willimbury, a couple up in Renfrew County. You may want to look at it. And just remember, I get four bucks if you buy it. I know you're all happy about that. Okay, so on this page, we're on a cheat sheet. I'm not going to go through this. I just wanted a couple of points across. This is according to Roberts Rules of Order. And I'm going to talk about the left-hand column only. So see a main motion at the bottom there? I don't know if you have it in paper, but on the screen is, is main motion. That's the highest, that's the lowest ranked motion. It can, it can only be made when nothing is pending. A main motion can only be moved when nothing is pending. And then it goes up and rank like a postponing definitely, which is a motion to kill emotion, which is very rarely used. But when it is used, it's powerful. Postponing definitely, a motion to amend, a motion to refer, a motion to postpone, a motion to limit debate, a motion to close debate, and a motion to lay on the table. So those are the, what we call the subsidiary motions and that's the order of rank. So let's say, for example, there's a main motion on the floor. And somebody moves to postpone the matter until the next meeting. Don't have enough information. Somebody moves to postpone the matter. Before that, before that's voted on, somebody moves to refer the matter to a committee or back to the committee. Now, refer is lower in rank than postpone. So refer would be out of order. Okay, so this shows you the ranking of the different motions. Spones pending, you can't move or refer.
Jim, you have on this, you have the postponed definitely, which that's, that's, I guess we would treat that as being a motion to defer.
Right, okay.
So our rule is you can only debate time and place. You're saying that would
On, on postpone? Yeah, or, or just the efficacy of postponing. Yeah, the efficacy of postponing or and you can postpone till within the meeting or to the next meeting. That's what Roberts and Alex, you may have it that you can postpone two meetings or three meetings or four meetings.
What I'm getting at, Jim, is so you have that as open to debate. And our rule, I think our procedure rule, it says that you can't debate it except as to time and place. So when, when you're deferring it to and to what?
Yeah, yeah, that's true. You, you, you can only, you can only debate postpone, first of all, the efficacy of postponing. Or where, where you're going to postpone it to. Yes, you can only debate that. You can't debate anything else. You're absolutely, your procedural bylaw is correct. Okay, so, and there's motions that have got no ranking. Remember, we've talked about some of them. See right at the top. Point of order can be made to interrupt even and to try and correct a problem, a procedural problem. Appeal the decision is get no ranking. Divide the question. We're going to do a divided question scenario, a couple of them. And withdraw a motion. That can be made at any time. So there's no ranking in those motions because they essentially move when it's appropriate.
And I think our procedure bylaw does allow the appeal of the chair's ruling. Don't think it requires a second or nor does the, the request to defy.
Well, it depends where, if it's silent, then you defer to Robert. But an appeal, appeal would normally require a second. But we can check that. I'm going to take a look at your procedural bylaw and give some information back to the clerk's department. And so, so that's, that's a cheat sheet that you might want to use, but it's Roberts Rules, okay? Adjourn, we says question of privilege, which is that kind of equivalent to point of order. I think we cover it later in this meeting. So that, that's, I'm putting that up just for the ranking. Okay, just to show you that if you've got a motion pending, you can move a motion that's lower in rank. Of course, there are exceptions, which I won't tell you today. For instance, if you, if you've got a main motion pending and somebody moves an amendment, then somebody moves to refer it to a committee, somebody can amend the referral to committee to send it to a different committee. So it's, the way I said, it is generally true 95% of the time.
Jim, I wish, sorry, Jim, I wish you hadn't told us that because we get confused on these points.
Yeah, I know. I know. I'm sorry, but yeah, I understand that. I've seen people come back to me a month ago and say, you screwed us up rightly. So but I'm telling you the truth, so that's okay. Okay, so main motion resolution. I just want to talk about the main motion. The, a main motion introduces a subject to the meeting for decision. Now, a main motion has got two major elements. It can be new, a completely new motion, or it can be something that you did in the past that you want rid of or you want to change. So for example, a main motion to buy 50 new computers is something new. Okay, you're going to take an action to do something that staff are going to get into. But you can also move and a motion to rescind something previously adopted. So if you've got a policy in place that you now say that doesn't work anymore, you would just simply give notice of that policy to rescind it or revoke it, whatever word to repeal it, whatever word you want to use. And that's the two elements. One is completely new and one is it's something from the past that you're going to do. And it could simply be that the policy from the past, maybe it needs a new sentence, a new paragraph because it doesn't quite work. And so you can amend it. It's called amend something previously adopted. So that's, that's the definition of a main motion. Only one main motion may be pending at one time. That makes sense. Do one thing at a time. Can only be moved when nothing is pending. We talked about that, yeah. When adopted, it becomes the officially recorded statement of action by the council. When the chair says this motion is adopted, it doesn't mean it goes into effect immediately. But it becomes the official action because you may have had in the motion and that this will become effective January 2021. Become effective on that day, but it's still the official policy at that time. When does the motion take effect? I just told you the answer, usually immediately. When the chair announces the motion is adopted, except when the motion contains a phrase that tells you when it becomes effective, like January the first 2021. Well, when a main motion is defeated, nothing happens. But it goes in the minutes. So this is important because yeah, I'm trying to think of it means that you can't make a negative motion. I move that we don't buy 10 computers. So there's a motion, a negative motion. I move we don't buy 10 computers. If that's adopted, we don't buy 10 computers. If that is defeated, we don't buy 10 computers. Because when a main motion is defeated, nothing happens. Any questions on that? So don't you, it's or refrain from doing something, another negative statement. or refrain from doing something, another negative statement. Be careful when you're using them. Any questions on that one? Do not move a main motion as a negative statement. There you go. A resolution is a main motion with bells and whistles attached. So a main motion is, is, is just a statement of what you want to do or trying to do. And a resolution has the things like paras clauses in it. For us, so and so, for us, for us, for us, resolve that, resolve that, resolve that. It's the same as a main motion and is treated as the same as a main motion. Your lawyer might say something different because in, in Canada or in the British system, a resolution is when you adopt something. But here, a resolution is treated as a main motion. Any questions? Yes, no. Main motions that are not in order. Conflict with a statute or superior document of authority such as bylaws. So you can adopt something that's contrary to the municipal act or any other act, or your bylaws for that matter. You can change your bylaws, but you can enact something contrary to your bylaws. The main motion or something substantially similar has been rejected in the same session. So if you defeat a main motion in a meeting, that's a settled matter, that's considered a settled matter. You can't bring it up again at that meeting. Except, can anybody give me the exception? Probably something that you very rarely do, and that's a good idea. But you don't do this. You could actually move a motion to reconsider the vote, which will, could bring it back. If you don't use reconsider, it's a settled matter. So the motion to reconsider a vote is where we say, oops, we made a mistake, let's correct it. That's all it is. It's a noops motion. Reconsider is a noops motion. You have in your procedural bylaw that you can move it at subsequent meetings. You can rescind it, you can reconsider it at subsequent meetings. Robert's Rules of Order said you can only do it at the same meeting. For instance, if you adopt a policy at one meeting, and you wanted to, you say to yourself, this isn't working for us. You may give a notice of, six months later, you would give a notice of motion to rescind it. There's no, no need to use a motion to reconsider. Just rescind it or revoke it or change it for that matter. So do you use reconsider a lot? I hope not.
Not really, but as you know, I mean, our procedural bylaw does have a procedure that you have to follow.
Oh, yeah, you have to follow your procedure. But all you're doing is.
But it's interesting, at a meeting, I've never seen at a meeting a motion to reconsider. I guess that would be pretty rare. You'd have to during the course of meeting, realize, wow, that was a big mistake. We, we just heard something that.
Yeah. I'll tell you where that happens a lot in conventions. Where they have their convention and there's a, a thousand people there, and they pass something, and then they talk about it for the next half day. And then the next day, because it's the same meeting, it's the same annual general meeting, you'll, some of them will come up and move a motion to reconsider the vote. I've seen that many a time. If it happens once a year, and say a municipality, you're having a bad year. Okay, the motion, the motion to reconsider should be rarely used. If you get it wrong, you can always rescind it anyway. If you defeat it, you can always bring it back. A lot of municipalities, like in Toronto, I know that if you defeat a main motion, you can't bring it back for over a year. We've seen, in our, our fast-moving world, it seems a bit much. They have a rule that they can do it with a two-third vote. So they, they have all those procedures too, and and you do as well. They're not wrong, they're just different. They might be awkward, though. That's the thing. Okay, any questions on main motions?
Yeah, councillor Toski's got a question.
Good.
Thank you. Further question on your, your reconsider or your rescind. So you just talked about some of the rules that we have in our procedure for the reconsideration. Rescind, anybody can bring forward at any time, like the, our, our reconsideration, for instance, has to be brought forward by a mover and a seconder that voted on the prevailing side of the issue.
Yeah.
But rescind, anybody can bring that forward?
The motion to rescind can be given notice, you, you know, when you're rescinding something, you're going to be changing something substantive normally. You would give notice of it, and any member can move it. It will require a second.
Thank you.
With reconsider, at the same meeting, it requires somebody who voted on the prevailing side to move it. So somebody who voted on the prevailing side, the winning side, it's not always the majority. The winning side that they can move the motion to reconsider. I do cover it later too, so let's move on. Amendments. So a primary amendment, amendment is a perfecting motion. We're trying to make, and let's assume I mean, we're doing it for a main motion. Although you can amend a, a motion to defer, you can amend a motion to refer, you can send it to a different committee if you wish. Let's assume a main motion, something you want. You're trying to make it better for Brantford. So there are four ways to make it better for Brantford. And how do we know we're going to make it better? Well, you're going to vote on it. A majority says, yeah, we think that's better. So a majority would decide. Primary, primary amendment, that's because there are such a things as a secondary amendment. What we call it in Canada, an amendment to the amendment. So that bottom part is an amendment to the amendment. So there's four elements. You may strike out words. You may insert words. You may strike out and insert a combination, or you may substitute one main motion for another. So if a main motion, somebody's given notice of a main motion to come to the floor, and it doesn't quite do what you want it to do, it's badly worded. Somebody could move a ma- main motion to substitute the current motion with the new motion. It's not used a lot, but it can be very useful in certain cases. So that's a motion to amend by substitution. The only thing you have to recognize is that has to be on the same subject. It has to be german to the other subject.
Jim, does it have to also kind of try and achieve the same thing? Like, I'll give you an example. So I think the way we handle it, if, if, if someone's trying to like, really substitute a motion, make it in, like, turn it a hundred and eighty degrees, same subject, but entirely different result or end. The, the way we tend to deal with that is to say, okay, if you want to do that, that's really very much different than this motion. And so you got to defeat this motion and then put, put the other one on, on the floor. That's kind of how we deal with it.
Okay, so, yeah, I, I, yeah, I understand what you're saying. Let me give you an example. Let's say something comes to your council that, that London, Ontario have a new environmental act. Okay, whatever, I'm making this up. So one of your councillors moves that we send a note of congratulations to London, Ontario with regard to what they're doing with the environment and their policies. It may be that a majority, though, of your council doesn't like what they're doing. In fact, they think it's silly. So they could move an amendment to strike out congratulate and simply say that we, we wish that you wouldn't adopt, we wish you wouldn't enact such an environment because it's going to affect et cetera, et cetera, Brantford. So there, there, there you've got an example of something positive coming to the council. And an amendment, because the majority want it, that the amendment actually reverses it. That's called an amendment to change it completely. It flips it, but it's still what the majority wants. Now, maybe I shouldn't be telling you this. But do, do people understand that? That you could have something that you, that two people in your council really like what London is doing, and the other eight or ten don't like it. So they can flip it by making an amendment.
So I guess what you're saying is that, according to Robert's Rules of Orders, that's okay. The same subject matter.
On the same subject matter, it's, it's called a hostile amendment, but it's permitted. What you can't do, what you can't do is add the word, I move that we buy ten computers. An amendment that says adds a word not, we do not buy ten computers, would be not, eh, eh, not german, german, but it's improper.
Why would that be improper and the other one wouldn't be?
Well, because on the one I just gave you, you can just simply vote against it.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Okay, and for us, the, you, you as a council might want to address what London, Ontario is doing. And you can't do it with a negative vote, you're just voting against it. So you make an amendment to show what your council wants London to do or not do. It's complicated. I usually don't get this complicated.
Yeah, because I, because I've run into it. That's why I'm asking, so.
Yeah, I know. It, it, it happens now and again where there's negative motions come up, or yeah. There is such a thing as a hostile amendment that is permitted because you want to take a position on something, and the first two councillors who go up there and moved and seconded it, you believe they got it all wrong and you flip it somehow with the use of words. I'm sorry I said anything now. Okay. A secondary amendment, a secondary amendment is where we've got an amendment on the floor, and we want to change the amendment for some reason. So the one about, I move that we strike out ten and make it fifteen computers. Somebody could move to strike out fifteen and make it twenty computers. That's an amendment to the amendment. You change the amendment. And an amendment to the amendment cannot be amended. Any questions on amendments? So amendment is a perfecting motion. There are four ways to do it. Strikeout words, very common. Insert words, very common. Strikeout and insert, very common. May substitute one main motion for another. It's uncommon, but it's quite powerful when you can use it. Next. Definition, division of a question. So a motion comes to the floor that you might want to divide. So I've given some examples here. And when I do this in the, in my physical meetings, I don't give them the answer. I ask them to sit down with each other and break into groups and do it. Number one says that we purchase a half acre, half acre hectare of vacant land adjacent to our property and use it as a parking lot and use it as a parking lot. Is that divisible? No. Because if you divided it, and you defeated the first part, that we purchased a half acre of, say, land, we couldn't do the second part. So the two parts aren't, the two parts are connected in the motion, so you can't divide it. Now, if you don't want to use it as a parking lot, what would you do?
We have to amend it then, right?
You would have to amend it. You would strike out a parking lot and put something else in there. So you can change it, but you can't divide it because the two parts are connected. So let's go to the second one. That the president visit the Manitoba Utilities Board in Winnipeg in September and the Quebec Utilities Board in Quebec City in November. That's divisible, two independent parts. Councillor V A.
I just want to go back to that number one, where you say you can't divide it. What if you just wanted to have the purchase of the land with no direction? To say, I would like us to purchase the land.
So then you would just move an amendment to strike out the words and use it as a parking lot. You would do it as an amendment.
Well, I would just like, we, we want to purchase a half acre of vacant land.
Right. So if it came to the floor as a half acre of vacant land and use it as a parking lot, it's not divisible, but it, but you can strike out the last part of the sentence so that you only buy the half acre, half a hectare. Got it? So on the second one, it's divisible because the two parts are separate and can be dealt with independently. That we sell our, we sell our unused property at Basshurst and Steels and donate the proceeds to the University of Toronto in the form of a perpetual scholarship in our name. That's not divisible because if, if the first part wasn't adopted, selling the unused property, we couldn't do the second part. So they're connected. In this case, they're connected, the same as number one. And number four, they're not connected, and therefore it is divisible, can divide it. Any questions on this? A, a lot of people don't get this, but on the division, there should be, there should be separate entities that can be voted on independently. Okay, next. Point of order and appeal. Okay, I I call these the, the chairs. Chairs don't like points of orders and appeal. First of all, the point of order and appeal, appeal the decision of the chair. When that happens in mine, I'm very courteous to the members who do it. If somebody says, I appeal from the decision of the chair, I will thank the member for the appeal. But that's not what I'm thinking, of course. But somebody says they don't make mistakes. I, I know the last mistake I made was the time I thought I had made a mistake and I hadn't. Okay, let's move on. Okay, oh no, I'm sorry, go back to point of order. Sorry. So the point of order, it raises a point of order is to bring to the attention of the chair that a rule has been broken or an error in procedure has been made. So we're just simply pointing out to the chair that a, a rule has been broken, please correct it. The chair can say, I agree or I disagree. Your point is well taken, your point is not well taken. That's the words used in Roberts. And whatever you decide, it can be appealed from. So a point of order is trying to correct an error. When is the point of order raised? The point of order has to be raised right away. If you don't raise a point of order at that time, then, and later on, it's brought up, it's too late. The action has been taken. And this happened in a school board last year sometime, where the chair took a vote and based on, on, based on a two, two-third vote, he thought it was just a majority vote to adopt something. I think it was a bylaw change. So the vote was actually fifty-eight percent. And he, he says the motion is adopted. After the meeting, somebody pointed it out. That it required a two third vote, which is 67%. It's too late, the bylaw had been adopted with a majority. So you have to bring these, now you can always correct it later, you can, you can correct it later eh, through eh, different motions. But not through a point of order. He rules on the point of order, the presiding officer, the chair rules on the point of order initially. And there is a case where the, and I, I mentioned this earlier. That if the chair is unsure of the point of order, he can hand it over to the assembly to decide. Shall the amendment be considered? Somebody complained that the amendment isn't germane. Shall the amendment be considered? So always put in a positive manner. Yeah, point of order is abused, point of order, Madam Chair, and then you start talking about the, the motion in front of them. Instead of specifically saying, where is the error in procedure? Next. Any questions on point of order? Okay, so an appeal is where somebody believes that the chair got it wrong. Eh, the purpose of the appeal eh, from the decision of the chair is to eh, permit the assembly by majority vote to substitute the presiding officer's decision with its own decision. So the assembly can reverse the chair's decision if they think the chair got it wrong. Way to handle it, thank the members for it and then take the vote.
So Jim, on this one, so the, so the person who raises the point of order, do they, so they set out what their, what their point of order is? And are they then allowed to give lots of reasons for that? Or do they just simply, are they supposed to keep it brief? Like, what's the rule on that?
Good question. Eh, so somebody appeals a decision of the chair. The chair would first of all, give the rationale for his decision. And then the other mem, the member who raised the point of order would give reasons for why he thinks the chair is wrong. Now, most, beyond that, it's not debatable in Canada. I haven't seen that debated in Canada. So the chair says why you ruled the way you did and the member says why he thinks he got it wrong. And then the chair will say, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? It's put in a positive manner. Shall the decision of the chair be sustained? And 50%, 50% or higher. Eh. It goes with the chair.
So Jim, sometimes how that works um in the past here, so the, the person raising the point of order will immediately provide their rationale. So I guess you're saying the proper way to do it in a Roberts Rules is you say, Chair, I think you, the, with respect, I think this is a, an error that's been made or whatever. And so then it goes to the chair to then appear, well, this is to explain, this is why I did what I did. And then the person appealing then gets to say, well, that's fine, eh, Mr. Miss, eh, Miss Chair, but eh, this is what I think it should be and why.
Right, exactly. So I've seen that happen when I've been in the chair and my decision has been appealed from. Eh, and the member speaks up and says where I went wrong, I will, I will, and I agree with the member. I will simply say the chair agrees with the member and then I reverse my decision. So the chair can reverse his decision too, without actually taking a vote with the members. Okay. But the chair, eh, usually the assembly will decide on the question being, shall the decision of the chair be sustained? But the chair could withdraw his ruling. Any questions? Next. So other motions, just let's go through these. I'll, I'll spend 15 seconds on each of them. And then you can maybe stop and ask questions. So a motion to refer to a committee, this is us sending something to a committee for further information. Eh, to bring back their recommendations on that subject matter. It could be a subject matter or it could actually be a motion, but it's often a subject matter. And that's all we're doing, we're sending it to committee. We can ask them to report us eh, next meeting or two meetings or three meetings. Eh, we can give them instructions, we could tell them that they should eh, talk to their eh, eh lawyer on this matter. And so you can give them instructions to do that. Eh. And yeah, so it's a simple motion to say we don't have enough information, let's send this to a committee. Any questions on that? Motion to postpone, I don't like using defer because it's so close to refer. Now, I use hearing aids here. Eh, I use motion to postpone. Your parliamentary authority says use postpone because it's confusing to use defer. Eh. Motion to postpone eh, simply sends it to some other place on the agenda. That can postpone it to sometime in the meeting or to the next meeting. And we already talked about that earlier, Mayor Davis.
So, so Jim, eh, Mayor Davis, sort of interrupt you, but I, I asked the clerk about that, sort of, this is back to the previous page. So that eh, the appealing, the chair's ruling on a point of order. Eh, I think our procedural bylaw requires the member who's a they have to state their reason briefly for the appeal. And actually, the, the chair doesn't actually get to then refute that.
Wow.
So it's kind of, I mean, that, that's probably maybe something we have to look at, but.
Yeah, take a look at that one. Eh, I, I don't think it would matter whether the member spoke first or the chair then eh, said why. I don't think that would matter, but I think the chair should obviously be given a reason. Should be given a reason why they're, why they ruled the way they did, so.
Yeah, and I think that's a problem with our procedural rule. It doesn't really allow the, the chair to say why.
Yeah. But, okay.
Yeah. Anyway, sorry about that. I sorry.
Well, that's good because eh, you, you have to follow your procedural bylaw.
Yeah.
And by the way, if you're, here's the thing, if your procedural bylaw is silent, you have to go to Roberts.
Yeah.
So if the procedural bylaw doesn't say, the chair doesn't get to explain. Then if it doesn't say that, then you drop to Roberts who says you do get to explain. Eh, okay. Close debate and vote immediately. That's English for previous question or call the question. Closing debate and voting immediately eh, requires a two third vote because we're taking away a right of the member. Remember, we said one of the right of the members is to, to debate. Eh, so it requires a two third vote to take away that right through a motion to close debate. Eh, motion to postpone temporarily. Eh, this is the motion to lay on the table. It's the same thing. Eh, eh, if somebody was coming in, if the Prime Minister was of Ontario was coming in to visit you. And you didn't know if anyone was coming and you're in the middle of your budget and he comes in, you would set it aside temporarily. You would lay it on the table. Temporarily, when the, after the premier has spoken, you would then take it from the table and resume consideration. Eh, the chair normally does that by general consent. The chair would say something like, the premier is now with us, eh, is there any objections? See those words again, is there any objection to setting this aside temporarily? There being no objection, we'll call on the premier. So that would, normally you wouldn't have to vote on it. Eh, you could do it by general consent. Then there's a motion to resume consideration. Eh. Raise a question of privilege. Okay, so there's a difference between raising a question of privilege and a point of order. A point of order says a motion eh, a, a rule has been broken. Eh, a question of privilege is simply saying that the privileges of the assembly, of council are being broken. Or of an individual are being broken. So let me give you some examples. Let's say, for instance, you're in the middle of a debate. And one of the councillors starts speaking about something that was done in an in camera session. Which is usually as a closed meeting where you, you don't normally take stuff out of it, okay? Eh, except the main motion sometimes, but if you start, if that person starts talking about something that happened in an, an in camera session. That shouldn't be done in an open session. And they're, eh, they're infringing on the rights of the assembly, of the council. So somebody could eh, say something like eh, Mr. Mayor eh, the member eh. Eh, I, I raise a question of privilege affecting the assembly. The member should not be discussing in camera sessions in open session. So that would be an example where it's been broken. Eh. With an individual, it could be that one of the councillors took a swipe at one of the other councillors. Maybe a middle finger somewhere along the lines there. Eh, that would be, somebody could raise a, anybody by the way, it doesn't have to be the member. Anybody could raise a question of privilege eh, against what that member just did. Okay. Any questions on raising a question of privilege?
Yeah, I got a question. So, so when does it cross the line? You, you mentioned the fingers, that clearly would cross the line, but the literal, giving literally the, the finger, but what if it's? You know, what's the line between? You know, for example, if someone says, I disagree with councillor so and so because they are blah, 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 blah. Well, that's, that would obviously, I think, raise a question of privilege.
Good.
Eh, what if they say, you know, councillor so and so is wrong, but his position, his or her position's wrong? Because of X, Y, Z.
I think that's okay to see.
That's okay.
Yeah. So here's, here's the thing, you're quite right. Eh, eh, can, there can be a something, but then here's a way it would work out. Mister, Mister Mayor, the member just said something against me. And I'm calling a point of personal privilege on, on that matter. It's now up to you to decide. And you could say, it is a question of privilege and I would ask the other member to stop speaking like that, for example. Now, any member of council could then appeal your ruling. See how it gets complicated at this point?
Yeah.
So you, you rule on the question of privilege, either yes or no. Any council member could appeal that decision. But if you rule and all councillors remain silent, then your ruling holds. Okay, and you could ask the member eh, to refrain from doing what he's doing.
Now, I've seen in certain situations, someone raises a point of personal privilege and they'll use it because they feel that the councillor has misstated what person raising the point of privilege had previously stated during the meeting. And you know, that's not the, I raise a point of personal privilege. Councillor so and so has just completely misconstrued what I said earlier.
No, no, that's not a point of privilege.
Why not?
That's not, because you should somehow get the floor again and explain it. It's debate, it's not a question of privilege because you disagree with somebody, what they said is not a point of privilege.
But what if they say, I heard councillor X say Z. And then councillor X says, point of personal privilege, I never said that. So that's not a.
Trying to, I'm trying to think how I, I would answer that. Eh. Yeah, it's eh, it's one of those tricky ones, but however you rule, Mr. Mayor, however you rule. That is the ruling of the assembly. Unless somebody appeals it. So you've got a lot of power. Okay?
Yeah, is there anywhere where that, that the privilege is defined? Or guidelines as to what's privilege and what's not?
Yeah, but we need to go and look up eh, eh. You can intuitively see if somebody flips a finger at you or something.
Yeah, yeah.
Eh, but others is marginal, so. Any potential or eh, eh. And Toski had a hand up, let's hear what she said.
Thank you, Jim. Eh, talking about privilege as well. Um, it's often, when you're talking about taking a swipe at another councillor or whatever. It's also often been said to me that, that the, the councillor has to be called out by name. But could it be simply, you know, repeating a statement that that other councillor said that made it very clear who they're taking a swipe at without actually saying their name?
Eh, I don't know if there's an answer to that one. Eh. Eh, normally a question of personal privileges against you, so you would have, I think you would have to identify who said it.
Okay, e- even if it was clearly said in the, like, in the meeting, if they're repeating a statement that a councillor said.
Okay, so, well, it would be a judgment call on your behalf then, whether to put, state the name eh. The thing is that, see, things like question of privileges can end up eh, eh, being eh, what we ask somebody apologize, the chair has to ask somebody to apologize. So eh, and if they don't apologize, they're, they're going for two meetings or something. They, these are very unusual circumstances, but they do happen from time to time in councils across Ontario. I saw it happen one time in Scarborough. Eh, so eh, in that case, I, I think it would be the judgment of the member raising it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Where were we? Okay, recess, yeah, recess is, the chair would normally say somebody would ask, Mr. Chairman, can we take a 10 minute recess? The chair would say, is there any objection to taking a 10 minute recess? There'd be no objection around 10 minute recess. Receses don't go in the minutes, by the way. Okay, adjourn. Unless it's overnight, adjourn eh, I've got that spelt wrong, no, no, adjourn, yeah eh, it's some we want to conclude the meeting and go home. That's a motion to adjourn. Okay, there is a, there is another variation of that, I'll just briefly mention it. You can see, I moved to adjourn. Eh, and fix the time to return tomorrow at nine eh, at 7:00 PM. So you can actually adjourn a meeting to a, a fixed time to take the agenda up again. It happens from time to time eh, in my book, I simply call it a recess till the next day. And Roberts uses a journal. And it's very rarely that that happens. Withdrawal motion. A withdrawal motion is where the mover of the motion finds that he doesn't like his own motion anymore. And so he would, he could interrupt. And say eh, eh, Mister Mayor, your honour eh, eh, I wish to withdraw my motion. Now you see how he says, I wish to withdraw? Because he doesn't own the, he requests the withdrawn, he doesn't own the motion at that time. The assembly owns it. So the assembly decides whether it's to be withdrawn or not. So normally what would happen is the chair would say, is there any objection to councillor so and so withdrawing his motion? There being no objection, the motion is withdrawn. There'd be no objection, the motion is withdrawn, simple as that. If somebody objects, you can take a vote on it. Which is very unusual, Canadians don't object, okay, councillor V A again.
Can you withdraw the motion before it hits the floor? In other words, say it's on your docket sheet, there's something coming up and it's in your name. Can you withdraw it or not move it forward?
Okay, so. Before the, I don't know if you approve your agenda, but uh. A lot of organizations approve their agenda right at the beginning. If you had put a motion forward uh to do something and you you now wanted to pull it. Before the agenda is approved, you can withdraw it at that time with no objection, very easily. Um, after the agenda has been approved, it requires a two third vote. To to change the agenda item, but and once the motion is on the floor, you can still try and withdraw it. So there's many of, many ways of doing it. But yeah, it depends on whether you've approved the agenda. Yeah.
The reason I say that is sometimes in the intervening time, things have changed and the motion may no longer be relevant, so.
Right, exactly, exactly, that's exactly when you would do it. Any other questions? Okay, this is the draw, suspend the rules, we haven't talked about suspending the rules. Suspend the rule says, wow, our procedure is, um. The procedure is interfering with us conducting business. Okay, I'll give you an example that happened to me earlier this year in January. I was doing exactly the same for Peterborough Counties as I'm doing for you, except it was a physical meeting. And they called the meeting to order and then they suspended the rules to permit me to go in the centre of the meeting room. Because the procedural bylaw specifically says you can't go into the middle of the. Non-members can't go into the middle of the meeting room. And so I was going to do my workshop from the middle of the meeting room because everyone, they were around me. And so they suspended the rules to permit to permit me to do that. Uh, it can be a very useful thing. Um, I remember, uh, another example of suspending the rules that happened a few years back. Was where a member made a mistake regarding a vote requirement and the man and. Uh, had already been settled. And the, I I told them to suspend the rules to permit the member to go back for agenda items. And take it up again. Normally you can't do that, so the members agreed to do that. And she would, that the the member went back and picked up the item that she screwed up on, so. Um, suspending the rules, you can only suspend the rules, you can't, you usually can't suspend rules. And in bylaws. But everything in municipalities seems to be in a bylaw, which kind of messes me up. But you've got a procedural rule that you could suspend. Let, there's also, one that quite often happens is that there's a rule that says only members may speak. And I've seen that rules, I moved to suspend the speaking rule to permit our guests to speak. So these are suspending the rules. Any questions on suspending the rules? Requires a two third vote, it's not debatable. The reason was, requires a two third vote is we're doing something against the rules. And we should have a penalty for it, and the penalty here is a two third vote. Point of information is simply asking a question. If somebody. Says point of information, Madam Chair, and the. The member then start, is is recognized to speak and the member starts talking about. The the motion that's in front of them, the chair should say, please ask your question. A lot of organizations, especially in the United States, don't use point of information. They say they have ask a question, and that's what it is. Point of information is to ask a question, you're not going to give information, you're going to ask a question to get information. Is there any more slides?
Have a quick question?
Yeah.
Could we go back to the other slide, please?
Yep.
Thank you. So, um, point of information.
Yeah.
So. I'm just, I'm just thinking of how we would potentially use that. So if I was to do a point of information, does that allow me to ask a question of anybody, including other councillors?
No. No, you you might say something like this, I have a point of information. Uh, with regard to the motion on the floor, uh, say it was from a committee. So, uh, you would have to do it, the committee has moved, usually, committee chair normally moves the motion, I don't know how you do it. But you would have to go through the chair, the point of information always goes to the chair first. The chair answers it if he can answer it, or he can ask somebody else to answer it. But you can also say, Mister, uh, Mister, uh, your Mr. Mayor. Uh, can, can we ask the committee chair a question? And the committee chair would answer the question. So there's a couple of ways to do it, but you should always involve the chair.
Yes, of course, yeah.
Right? A controlling point. So. Yeah, uh, by the way, one of the other things is, normally when our committee comes to the floor. And you've got committee of the whole, all you, you've also get standing committees, right? Um, when the committee comes to report, the, the chair would give a report. And normally, normally move a motion, a recommendation from the committee in the form of a motion. The general principle here is that the chair would, the chair of the committee would move the motion. And but then the chair of the council runs that part of the meeting. That can go back to the committee chair to answer questions if need be. Now, it seems a bit inefficient to do that, but in general, the committee chair. Would be able to answer questions, or presumably they were answered during his report. Um, I I'm not sure how how you do it, a lot of organizations allow the committee chair to take questions. During the reporting part. Of the report. I'm going to ask you a question, when a committee comes to your council. Do they do a report, a short report, two, three, four, five minutes? And then move the motion, or do they just go straight to the motion or the recommendation?
Yeah, so we do, Jim, we do a kind of omnibus motion to put everything on the floor and then.
From the committee?
Yeah, from, 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 it could be from several committees.
Wow.
You know, and so that, so that, but let's say the committee of the whole, our committee of the whole may have fifteen items on the agenda. And so we asked for an omnibus motion to move everything and then some matters can be separated for discussion. Um, so it's a bit different than, so what, and then, and then when a matter comes up from a committee. There's not normally a report done at the councillor committee of the whole meeting. Because we'll already have a written report, right?
Okay, so that, but that is a report then, right?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's almost always a written report, well, there has to be a written report, otherwise it won't be on the agenda, so.
Okay, so I like the idea of what what I call a consent agenda. You call it an omnibus agenda, where you put fourteen or fifteen or twenty things on it that are. Non-controversial and a councillor can pull it off, one councillor can pull an item off to discuss separately. So that's a good.
Yeah, we're not moving, we're not wasting time moving and seconding.
Right, exactly.
Resolutions that are just, that that no one wants to discuss, they.
I go, I go to a, a, an A G M in the United States every year, they have a hundred items on the agenda. But they put eighty of them on the consent agenda or the omnibus agenda.
Yeah.
Usually they're all voted with one vote, or maybe somebody pulls one or two items off it. But it's a very useful, efficient way of conducting business. Okay, so I don't know if I've got my, I I I've explained the committee, but normally the committee would report. Uh, and uh, put a motion on the floor, but you seem to be doing it slightly different, so. Um. But what you're doing probably isn't wrong if it's, if it works for you. Okay, um, the role of the chair. Okay, let's go through this. Recognize members to speak, of course, one speaker at a time. The mover has first right to speak. Members who have not yet spoken have first right over members who have not spoken. So during the meeting, uh, uh, if you, Mr. Chair, Your Honour. Would say, could say something like, I've had three members speak for the motion. You could say, does anybody wish to speak against the motion? Nobody wishes to speak against the motion, are you ready to vote? So in other words, you can speed it up, if there's three members who have spoken for the motion. Maybe there's nobody wishes to speak against it and you've already asked them. Uh, because you want to go pro and con, pro and con ideally. But, uh, but when something is said hand up, you don't, really don't know which ways are going to. Debate or, anyway, so, uh, you, you could do that, um. Yeah, so, yeah, so, uh, yeah, so you you can actually ask that question with regard to. Uh, uh, are you ready to vote? That's some more key words for the chair, are you ready to vote? Uh, so to get to the vote as quick as possible, more efficiently. Fair and but polite intervention when necessary. Uh, I use the hand signal and ask the members who are chattering away to each other to please refrain from chattering to each other. Uh, fair and but polite intervention, ensure debate remains impersonal, of course. Address remarks through the chair, I've said that maybe ten times tonight, tonight, remain neutral and impartial. That's the role of the chair, you don't take sides, um. Time conscious, so there's maintain order, that's important, super important. Time consciously, again, super important, ensures motion is stated clearly. Don't allow members to, if a member stands up and says something very nice, and he says, I saw move. Don't allow that, the I saw move. Ask him to actually state the motion, okay, you you want it, do you use an overhead projector? In council?
Uh, you know, generally, Jim, um, the, there is a notice of motion, then. Then later, committee of the whole, there will be the actual resolution, it'll come to us in the agenda, it'll be in writing. And we, we also encourage, if someone has an amendment they know they want to make, if at all possible to let the, discuss that with staff. So that we see coming into the meeting what the potential amendments might be, but we also have amendments from the floor, so.
Right, yeah, so what you're saying is is very good, uh, if it's in writing, it's great. Uh, if it's on an overhead projector, that's different, it's still great. Um, and if you can get members to tell you which amendments they might make during the meeting, that helps.
Yeah. It makes for much more efficient meetings, that's for sure.
Right.
Yeah.
Uh, I'm having difficulty reading the overhead because I made it too small. Okay, back to role of the chair. Uh, summarize from time to time, a bit dangerous to do that, you might be taking sides when you summarize. So be careful if you summarize, you know, after a twenty minute debate. Recognize when debate should be closed, ask the members, are you ready to vote? When you feel, when you feel that it's a judgment call on your part to ask that question. Complete the business and take the vote, ensure the minority is protected. Why should we ensure the minorities protected? After all, they're going to lose. So why should we ensure the minorities protected? Because you might be in the minority on the next question. So we try to make sure that everybody's protected at all time. Protect debate if possible, this can be done in large conventions. Ask for speakers on the other side, does anybody wish to speak against this motion? It's okay to, for the chair to say that. Any questions on this, on the role of the chair?
Yeah, yes, I have a question, Jim.
Yep.
Um, so speaking, you know, about maintaining, um, impartiality. Does this mean that that whoever's in the chair should never be part of the debate, to state stating any comments or taking their turn in the debate?
Okay, so. Generally, that's true, but not in committee of the whole. Usually in commit, in committees, whether committee of the whole or a, a regular committee. Uh, the chair can normally speak in committee of the whole. A lot of organizations don't allow it, especially if the committee of the whole is fifteen people. Uh, but in council. The chair technically should give the chair up to the vice chair. And go and speak, and under Robert's rules, if he does that. He can't go back and take up the chair. Until the item is disposed of, that's what Robert says. In Canada, we tend not to do that, we tend to have the chair step out, step down. Speak to a motion, then take the chair back up immediately. That's the, that's the rules, and. That, does that happen a lot? I didn't see that happening a lot in.
Well, I mean, certainly I have, when I've been in the chair, I have spoken to something, the only time I have, uh. Passed up the, past the chair is if I'm moving something, but I, I, I fairly regularly, I think our chairs, we do. Take our turn in speaking.
Are you talking about committee of the whole?
Both.
Yeah.
Committee of whole and council.
Yeah, what we do, Jim, is, um, it's kind of like a custom, I guess, but, but anyway, so. It, the way I do it is, um, I make sure that I'm, that I don't speak before anybody else speaks. And when I state what I'm doing, it's really more sort of informative. You know, I'm voting yes or no, and this is kind of why, as opposed to aggressively debating it. Uh, just really a, a try and define, I try and state what, why I'm voting the way I'm voting without. Really trying to debate it, um.
So here's another thing.
Because, you know, I think people expect each of the elected representatives to say what they're doing and why. But I guess you're right, I mean, the chair also has that role to be neutral and impartial. And, you know, so we try and strike a fine balance between the two, it's, it's difficult.
There's a, there's another rule. And your, and your parliamentary authorities, it says, the chair should not vote. Unless his vote will make a difference. So if the vote is nine to two, and why vote? It doesn't make a difference, try to remain impartial, so the specific rule is that the chair does not vote. Unless his vote will make a difference.
Yeah, we in our, we in our procedural bylaws certainly, you know, expect the chairs to vote.
Does it say the chair have to vote, or?
But there certainly our procedural bylaw says the chair can vote and our custom is that the chair always does vote.
Okay, yep, okay, I've given you another rule. Yeah, but so what you're doing is, again, it's not wrong, and, but, uh. Yeah, you're doing it differently. Any other questions on the role of the chair? Yes?
Yeah.
Is that changed?
Counselor Wall?
Yeah.
Does it matter who speaks first?
I, I, I don't know who's speaking because I don't see all the councillors. Only see four or five of you.
Yeah, I think we've got two that want to speak, uh, councillor Wall and then councillor Vanderstel, so I think councillor Wall, yeah.
Sorry, my question was at the end of the presentation, councillor Vanderstel, have the floor through you.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, councillor. Uh, Jim, um, so you, you've, you've mentioned the phrase, you're not wrong. You're not doing it wrong a number of times, seven or eight times to my count. So when, when you, um, are, are you making recommendations that we change? Some or all of the processes we currently or historically have done. Uh, to better effect, or are you saying some of them? What, what are we saying?
Okay, so I'm, I'm looking at procedural bylaw. I've read it a couple of times. Oh. I've read a couple of times and I'm going to give advice on the procedural bylaw. If you want, and I could get, the reason I say you're not doing it wrong is. Because you're not doing it wrong. You can have your custom, you can have your own rules in your procedural bylaw. But I'm giving you options like that one we just talked about, the chair not voting. Unless his vote will make a difference. Doesn't that make sense to you? Now, you, you operate in a political environment. You also operate, uh. So you want people to know how you vote. And maybe your procedural bylaw says that. I haven't seen that in the procedural bylaw. So a number of times I have said that, but it's, it's. And you know, and I don't know all the things that you actually do. And. And, and the procedure, the, the only thing I noticed that I. I've, I've mentioned this a couple of times is that the chair should take the vote rather than have staff take the vote. Which they do in a recorded vote apparently. Um, and I mentioned that a couple of times, so. Uh, during this presentation, I'm not making any recommendations to you, and that's what you've noticed.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Yeah, but do you think I should make recommendations, but in a format like this?
I leave that to the will of council to decide whether or not they would take recommendations based on your experience. To make a more expedient and a more efficient and a more respectful meeting, absolutely.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I'll ask Tanya, can you help us on that?
Um, certainly. So through you, Mr. Mayor, um, we're actually getting some, a report back from Mr. Lockery after this experience. On some areas where we may want to look at our procedural bylaw, um, either if something is not as clear as it could be. Or if there's another item that we could include to make the process more efficient or have our meetings be, um. Less, are more expedient as well. So we will have that, which will then have our clerks team. Uh, review Mr. Lockery's information and then present a council report for consideration on possible amendments to the procedural bylaw. So that will be coming out of this process. It really dove, uh, walks in step with the code of conduct as recently being reviewed as well. So we wanted to have both documents reviewed, um, in the same timeframe. Given that the procedural bylaw has never been, to my knowledge, externally reviewed.
I'm just looking at something here. Yeah, so, um, I'm sorry, um. Yeah, uh, I didn't think this was a proper thing to say. This is the way you should do it, honestly. Uh. Uh, I'm trying to teach you what Robert's rule says. If it's different than what you do, it's probably not wrong. Because once you put it in a procedural bylaw, the procedural bylaw takes precedence over Robert's rules. But there are some good stuff in Robert's rules, um. And I might touch on some of them when I do the stuff with Tanya and her staff. Uh, on the procedural bylaw, um, I read your code of conduct. I liked it. Uh, there was something in it, I can't remember, I didn't like, but. Uh, I'll, it was just a small point, but. Any, any question? Are we at the end here? Role of the chair? Honestly, don't remember.
Yeah, that's, that's your last slide, Jim. So what I suggest we do is, at this point, some members may have been hanging on to questions, and I see councillor Weaver's.
Right, right, exactly, okay.
Weaver. I throw you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so, Jim, what we do is we rotate, um, the chair position currently. So if we were in a position where the chair doesn't vote unless there's like a tie or, or there's a need for the votes. If I was chairing this month's meeting, something occurred that I didn't like. And then the next month, I'm no longer in the chair. I didn't vote, but am I able to bring something back as a reconsideration? Or am I blocked from doing that because I was the chair of the meeting, despite the fact I didn't vote for or against the item?
Uh, are we talking about committee of the whole or are we talking about you rotate the council chair?
Committee of the whole.
Yeah, so in committee of the whole, you can bring, bring back. The reconsideration at the next meeting.
So as the chair that didn't vote, I can still do that? Because I think our current rules are you have to vote one way or the other and.
Okay, okay, yeah, um. It doesn't make sense. I'd need to check that out.
Okay.
Uh, because the committee rules are different for reconsider than they are for council, slightly different. But I can't remember if it covers the point you just made.
Okay.
So, yeah, so remember, committee rules are sometimes different. They're ninety-five percent the same. And the, the debate is relaxed during, actually, I'm quite sure that you could move it. Okay, but I'll check it out and I'll pass it to Tanya.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Uh, councillor Martin.
Yeah, yeah, this idea of the chair only voting if it makes a difference. The way we use the software to vote, you really can't do that because we don't, we all vote at the same time and you don't see the results. Until the clerk. Uh, finalizes the calling of the question, so.
Right.
Chair doesn't know whether it's going to be a close vote or not until after everyone else has voted.
Yeah, but you.
Because of the system we use, that doesn't really apply.
I agree that, uh, the, the technology kind of up, upset some of the procedures. But in that particular case, what I've seen in other organizations is that. Since the chair is going to decide the result. I mean, the chair announces the result. When he see, when he sees the electronic result. He should be allowed to vote at that time if he wishes. So, uh, again, let me say it again, what you're doing is not wrong. Just different.
Yeah, and Jim, just a, a point of information. Uh, so there are, our procedural rule fifteen point eight five talks about the time limit for speaking. It does have in it, the chair shall be entitled to speak in respect of any matter. I knew it was in there somewhere. So we've kind of gone.
It's very specifically.
Yeah, and I think it's just because trying to, that balance between people knowing why the chair voted the way he or she did it. But we try and, at least I try and not be aggressive when I state why I'm going to vote, so. Uh, councillor Van Schilberg, I think you had your hand up. Yeah, and the, and the chair does have, the rules require that, so.
I believe in the past, like way, way, way back in the day, it was, uh, done here that the mayor would determine the vote. But it, you know, if we, if that was ever implemented, would it always be? Uh, we all vote and then the mayor would follow up and, and basically stamp it. On one way or another. In other words, if he doesn't have to vote, he doesn't have to vote, and if he does, he does.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, what, what would happen is that if the vote was ninety-two, the chair would say the motion is adopted. Now, if it was five to four, he could vote and it could fall in the negative to make a tie and defeat the motion. Yeah.
That's interesting. Um, now, there's nothing wrong with what we, what we have done. Uh, I would be then to say that if we've changed how we've done it, we probably did it for a good reason.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm not objecting. To what you're doing, but I'm saying, uh. There are different ways to do it. For example, you, if the vote was five for the motion and four against. The chair could vote against, create a tie and defeat the motion. That's when, that's what I mean when the chair votes, when his vote will make a difference. Now, if you don't want to follow that, make sure you get it correct in the procedure by law.
Yeah.
Give me all something to think about, that's good.
Yeah, yeah, I think, Jim, it's, it's a real struggle because those. Do you want your chair to be just completely independent and impartial, right?
Yeah.
And.
How big is the council?
I guess that's better able to make rulings and because they're trying to be scrupulously neutral. Um. Yeah, it's, it's a balancing thing.
Okay, I've got a question. How big is your council, including yourself, Mr. Mayor?
It's eleven.
Eleven. You know, Robert's Rules of Order says, uh, everything is relaxed. When you can relax the, the procedure for less than twelve members. In the council, that's what he does the break off. After, after you go above twelve, it becomes more complicated. Fifteen, twenty, you have to be more in control. Uh, yeah, you're right in the middle there.
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's an interesting. Balancing of different viewpoints.
Yeah, so, uh, we'll talk, I've talked to Tanya, I've known Tanya for a long time. Uh. And I knew your previous clerk as well for a long time. So we can sit down, uh, with them and I might make recommendations. You can ignore them, right? I don't have the final say on this, so.
Sure. I think, I think, Jim, I'd speak to the council, we might appreciate that. Because I think our, our clerk is right. I don't think there's ever really been a, an outside look at our procedural rules. My understanding is they've been crafted and changed over time by the, the council members working with staff. Trying to figure out what works best for us, but I, I certainly would appreciate having a little, you know, someone independent and. And, and the wealth of experience you have saying, hmm, maybe you should think about this, right?
Yeah, that's all I can do. Uh, I've been coming down to Brantford for twenty-five years, but it's always been for. With your staff members doing workshops, or I've probably done three or four in the last twenty years.
Right. So are there any other, uh, members that have any questions or comments, councillor Wall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you. Um, so questions and comments then.
You know, this is a.
Free for all.
It's, it's a free for all tonight.
Uh, first, I want to say thank you to Jim for coming in and speak to us. Um, this was a lot to take in and as the.
Yeah, it was.
The first term councillor, um. This is invaluable. Um. My main question, I guess, was going to ask is, you know, as somebody who's never done this before. What is something, in your opinion, like advice that I need to hear? Uh, and then, you know, what is something that, you know, even for the people who've been around this table for a longer time, what is something they need to hear too?
Yeah, well. Hold up my computer, I need, I need to charge my computer. Hold on, hold on. Otherwise I'll disappear.
He's stalling for time to come up with a good answer.
So, uh, councillor Wall, uh. What I did today, I did the basics. A couple of times we went off the basics when we talked about maybe what the procedural bylaw was doing. So the main thing, if you want to learn something about this, is to. It's hard to tell. I don't want to be promoting myself. I do one-on-one training as well. With, uh, not municipalities, but with the, not-for-profit organizations, the president, maybe the vice president. I don't know if you want to do that kind of a thing, um. Uh, learn the basics. You know that chart that I go in there, the cheat sheet? Learn a little about, about that, the, the first four or five motions at the bottom of the page. Those are the most common, like the main motion amendment. Uh, refer to committee, espawn and maybe close to be, learn, learn about them, what they, what they do. Um. And you'll catch on eventually, but that's a bit the basic. Basic thing you have to learn is do the motions. And the first two slides, right? About the principles. And then how to make a motion, the six steps in making a motion. Uh, it all comes naturally after a while, um. But yeah, that's all I can say about it. I'm sorry, I didn't help you a lot, but.
It's okay, my.
Unless you want to, if you want to spend a million dollars, you can do one-on-one training.
So then my next.
Take that as a no.
Yeah, my, my next question is kind of like a question and observation at the same time. Um, I've mentioned that council before, that I've taken it upon myself to start watching council meetings in other municipalities. Uh, in other cities and other countries even, um, especially because I'm, I'm interested in it. I want to learn more and I want to be better. Um, in your opinion, because you've been around doing this for other councils. Is there a sense of uniformity? Or is it really each municipality kind of does its, its own way and has to have its own group?
Well, I see a lot of municipalities doing the same thing. For instance, uh. On an appeal, which doesn't happen a lot. It's, this is not debatable. And most of them take that up. Um, with regard to committees, the committee chair is quite a powerful position and the report. They actually produce a report from the, the committee. And they also, they're to make the recommendations from the committee back to council. Now, I know committee of the whole, it's the same people that are on it. But, yeah. There, there's a lot, uh, within the municipalities, there's a lot of commonality.
All right, thank you again for your time.
Okay, thanks.
Any other, any other questions, discussion? Seeing none? Well, I want to thank you very much, Jim, and, um, I, I think it's been very, it's been very helpful for me because I, I, I chair more than anyone else as the mayor. But we all do chair to some degree. And even though our procedural bylaw is customized, it takes Robert's Rules of Orders and, and. Some ways it's the same, some ways a bit different. Uh, some of these conversations helped me better understand our procedural bylaw and. And yeah, maybe my mind open to, okay, there's certain things we can do in our, in our bylaw that might improve it. Um, or do we just leave it the way it is in many ways because we like the way it is, so.
Yeah.
Um, but, but it's, it's, you know, I've never really thought about our procedural bylaw this way, uh, to some, to this degree. It's really been for me just learning it and I, I do reread it a couple of times a year because you can, you forget parts of it, so. Um, so again, thanks very much, Jim, and we'll look forward to some of that information percolating back to us. Your comments regarding our procedural bylaws that comes to us back through our.
Yeah.
Very competent clerk staff.
Yeah, I'm going to try and do that in the next two or three weeks, so.
Okay, thanks and I hope you have, uh, the rest of your summer is good. Um, but then I guess if you're, if you're retired, every, everything's summer-like, isn't it?
Yeah, you know, I hate this weather.
Yeah.
It has to be eighteen degrees before I like the weather.
Right. Um, again, thanks very much and we'll see everybody next Tuesday. Have a good one.
Thank you.
Yeah.